Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the zoning board of appeals meeting for the village of Tuckahoe for October the 11th. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Nancy, please roll the call the roll.
Member Lang?
Present.
Member Scalzo?
Present.
Member Paladino?
Present.
Member Jackson?
Present.
First item is to approve the minutes of the July the 12th, 2017 meeting. Do we have any comments? additions, deletions? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the July the 12th, 2017 meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
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 Thank you. First item is five circle. Is the applicant present? Very good. I need to remind the public that the public hearing is still open. Is there anyone from the public who needs or wants to speak regarding five circle?
Anthony Laurie, 123 Waller Street.
Good evening.
Good evening, gentlemen. First of all, I want to say thank you to Mr. DeMarco and his crew. They finally fixed my sidewalk, and it looks good after this man damaged it. And it also did cost me $150 besides because my oil fill sunk, and it got bent from when he damaged it with his contractor, when they stole the water. The sidewalk has been repaired, but as I said, it still cost me $150 to get my oil fill corrected so the oil man could bring oil to my home. I just want to say how convenient this man has had it for all these months since June. I remember Commissioner Jackal said that this was the end back in June, and here we are in October. Now, he's just supposedly finished, and then we came back in July. And then I even called Mr. Williams up that he had a ladder hanging in Mr. Volpe's yard. As Mr. Williams told me, that he couldn't do nothing because that was private property, I understood. But he still kept it up for two or three months until he finally finished it because he had to come here. And I just want to say what a perfect wise guy that man is, and I'm sure what he's going to do when he's finished, he's going to use those garages for business. I could tell you that. I can almost promise it to you. Now, I just only hope you guys up there and Anthony over here set the rules for him because I hope the rules do get enforced this time. As you guys all had said, this was the end, and that was back in June, and now we're here in October. So he's had plenty of time to do what he had to do. And I'm sure he's going to come up here with more excuses tonight, what's going to happen. And like you said, we're on almost three years of this remodeling supposed to be done and completed, and we're not nowhere near finished. And as I says, his problems cost me $150. Thank you.
Thanks for your input. Anybody else in the public who would like to speak regarding five circle?
John Kaiman, seven circle road. I live next to this gentleman. I just wanted to find out from you guys, did anybody see a house previously before he took over?
Yes.
Absolutely. No, no, I'm asking panels. Everybody saw the house?
Yes.
This house 100% better than that house. That house was, is dis-repaired. Nobody cares on the board. Nobody come. I live next to it. I saw this house every day from my kitchen. Nobody comes, and nobody said one word. This guy put new siding, put everything new, looks beautiful. Houses around get even better value, and I don't know why we're wasting time, honestly.
Thanks for your input. Anyone else from the public who wishes to speak regarding five circle road? Seeing none, I'm going to make a motion to close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So concludes the five circle for this evening. We need to draft a resolution which will be given at the following meeting. Thank you. Next applicant is 180 Lake Avenue. Is the applicant present? Please step to the mic, state your name, and the reason that you're seeking a variance.
Jonathan Odash. We're seeking a variance to create a mudroom at a front porch in front of the house and have parking in the front yard, as well as legalizing existing shed and deck in the back, pre-existing. And I have a question, actually.
Sure.
Since the issue of the front parking is pending or is being considered by the village, is there any kind of timeline on that decision? So I was just doing a few quick calculations. We may be able to meet the 40%, if that is the case. You know, if that is the case, if it's going to be decided soon, I would ask for a continuation to allow us to go back and see if we do meet it. But only if it's going to be, if it's going to be six months before they decide, it kind of becomes a moot point.
I don't know the answer to that question, but...
I believe the parking in the front's in the infancy stages of the village board. I don't know if they have a determination there. We're talking to their planner. So you're pretty far away, I believe, from the front yard parking issue being resolved. Well, yeah, there's still open issues. They just, they're just looking into it right now.
I didn't know that was, you know, consideration because I said if it is 40%, I think we can meet it. I just, in discussing this with my client, I think what we'd like to do is ask for a continuation to the next meeting to allow us to go back and do some calculations, some modifications, talk to some of the neighbors, and try to come back with a solid amended application addressing walkways and other issues that were spoken about in the workshop, and also try to deal with this parking situation, come up with something more concrete.
Does the applicant understand that's going to delay this, you know, it's going to be another two months now after you come back with a revised application?
It was a question of that or not, you know, being able to build it. I mean, the indication in the workshop was that there are a lot of issues that are open that the board is not 100% on board with.
So, you know, from my perspective, I would just say having a site plan, a landscape plan would be helpful to understand the full context of what you want to do. You know, not getting, getting rid of the center stairwell, I think, could beautify the property. You know, if you leave the curb cut there, then there's less problem of, you know, the parking that we were talking about. You know, so you could have a wider driveway, but you have the two separate entryways, from my perspective. So I think there's a possibility to improve the plan versus what you have here.
I would agree, but may I ask that the architect put the picture back up so we can show the people at home again what you are presently seeking regarding the parking in front? The whiteboard.
Bill, can I ask on the retaining walls on the sides of this driveway arrangement, does he need to have a fence or something of that nature? Because it gets up pretty high towards the end. No? Okay, thank you.
Specifically, the larger one that shows the front of the building would be more helpful? If you could just walk the public through...
Basically, what we have is an existing two-family home.
I'm sorry. You need to take the mic. I'm sorry.
Grab the microphone, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we have an existing two-family home with a flush wall facing the street and two front doors. One of the applicant's main concerns is to want to try to create a mudroom so you're not walking directly into the front of the house. To do that, we have to pull out about five feet from the face of the house, create a single door, and it creates a mudroom and a windbreak with two interior doors, creating a vestibule, basically. To do that, we have to go three feet beyond the front door to allow access to the door. Because in our application, we were trying to be able to park a car, not in front of the garage, but between the garage doors to allow the tenant to get in and out, we were proposing building essentially a porch that spanned the width of the house with a clear span with entries, stairs on each side, and a full covered roof over the porch. So it changes the front of the house from a slab look. It looks more like a typical colonial, single-family home. The other thing about this drawing is this drawing is showing a cut through the driveway. The reality of it is, is that from the street, you're going to see this because it slopes down. So it's really going to bring the porch down and make it look much more like a regular home. So it kind of is hiding that sunken driveway effect. That's what we're trying to accomplish. The goal was not to add three spaces initially. The goal was to allow the car in the garage to get in and out without having to move the car behind it because it is a two-family house. So it's not that all the keys are sitting unhooked by the front door. So that was the reason for this approach. We've, since our first meeting, we've tried various ways of addressing this, and unfortunately, in most cases, we have a lot of possibilities. Because the lot's undersized, because of these setbacks, we have very few options here. So what we're doing is requesting a continuation to the next meeting to allow us to go back and kind of develop this a little more and try to address the board's concerns, hopefully, before we come back.
All right. So basically, you're looking to expand on either side about four feet out, which is further, you know, exaggerating the non-compliance. You're also looking to remove the front walkway and the steps in order to park a car basically right in front of the house?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. We need to open the public hearing unless I did already, and I forgot. Sorry.
Well, it's continued. Do we want to open it or not?
Yeah, I think the applicant has asked for a adjournment, Mr. Chair, so I don't think...
You're going to adjourn until next month? That was your request?
Yes.
All right. Do we need to vote on that?
Not necessary.
No?
Not necessary.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Sure.
And Mr. Chair, I think the reason for that is the public will be commenting on something that might not be moved.
It may be totally different. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, 138 Columbus Avenue, they're seeking a renewal for a special permit. If they're present, please step forward. State your name.
Good evening. Joe Fernandez, architect, 571 A. White Plains Road, Eastchester, New York.
Thank you. What variance are you, a special permit are you seeking to renew?
The special permit for a auto body shop. Currently in existence, and no changes have been made since the last approval, and we're just seeking to extend that.
Any questions?
Bill, have we had any complaints about this business, about this property?
No.
Okay. Should we spend any more of this man's time?
Nope.
It's a clean, professional, good-looking, well-run business. Clean as a pin.
Everything is completely enclosed.
Everything is completely enclosed. We've had no complaints from neighbors. I see no issue.
You understand we need to open a public hearing on this, as we mentioned? All right. Do you have any other?
Nothing else to add.
Good. All right. Thank you.
Now, sorry, can I ask one quick question? So right now, he's on a five-year cycle. He's got to come back in in five years?
Yes.
So every five years, he's got to come back in front of the board. And is he coming from both boards or just the 500 bucks and come in front of the zoning board?
No, just the zoning.
Just the zoning board. Every five years, 500 bucks. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing regarding 138 Columbus Avenue. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment regarding 138 Columbus Avenue? Please step forward. Seeing none, we need to leave this public hearing open until the following meeting. That's it. Thank you.
Do you have a motion to keep it open, or do you just keep it open?
No, I don't think so. Next item, 173 Marbledale Road. Is the applicant present? Please step forward. Please state the reason why you're in front of us.
Hi. David Borbuti, architect representing Broken Bow Brewery. We're here tonight for a special use permit, or actually, an amendment to the special use permit that we presently have.
Okay.
So we're here tonight for basically three items. Number one would be the request to have a food truck in the parking lot. The second would be to expand our present beer garden. And the third would be to, at some point in time, the possibility of having a tent in the parking lot for some future special events. We've had that once. We don't know if we're going to ever have it again, but I guess at the request of the village board and members of the village, we were asked to come here tonight so we could alleviate some of the going back and forth to the village board for special things.
Okay.
So let's take these one at a time. Why don't we talk about the beer garden first? Explain the rationale for wanting to expand the beer garden and architecturally what you're trying to accomplish.
Okay, so presently, we have approval from the planning board, two years ago, I believe, to have a beer garden that's roughly 18 by 26. It's surrounded by a small landscaping area of boxwoods, landscaping that the planning board approved. Presently, there are five tables for people to come out and mingle when the weather is nice from the tasting room. The idea is just to expand that. People can come out. We're going to add possibly five more tables, same sort of landscaping around it so the architecture would basically fit in. We would lose two parking spaces. We presently have 14 spaces. It would bring us to 12. And I believe from the zoning ordinance at the planning board, there is no specific requirement for parking, so basically, the planning board sets that requirement. We were at the planning board meeting last month, and I believe that there was really no objection to the elimination of parking.
Bill, have we had any complaints about people loitering or using the beer garden? Stevens Green has a beer garden outside. How is that similar or different than what's being proposed here from your perspective?
Theirs has a tent seasonal, so their beer garden is seasonal.
And did we approve that at the zoning board, or was that done by right of way? Or...
The beer garden really doesn't need the zoning board approval because that's a site plan issue for the planning board.
Okay. So we're...
The thing that he needs is for the, basically, the food truck for a special permit.
Gotcha. Gotcha. Okay.
Does he need an approval for us regard to the tent and everything too? Or is that village?
What are we ruling on here today? What easements is the zoning board supposed to be dealing with?
To amend his special permit.
In order to allow for the food truck and the tent?
Food truck and the special events.
Okay, so we have no...
So the beer garden, I just want to go back to the beer garden very quickly. So by right, they can put in a beer garden, and so then it comes down to site plan issues, which is what the planning board decides?
Yes.
Okay, so there's no variance required for a beer garden. Okay, understood. Thank you for talking to us anyways. Appreciate it. Okay, so we'll go to the second issue, which is the food truck. Again, can you explain what you're thinking with the food truck? You need a special permit to have a food truck, so...
I would like to pass it off to Mr. Lamuth. He could explain better the rationale.
Thank you.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
We've been open now for about four years, or actually, past four years. It's been a great four years in Tuckahoe. And there are two questions that we get asked, more than any other. The first is, is it Broken Bow or Broken Bow? Because it's spelt exactly the same way. And it's Broken Bow after my wife's birthplace, Broken Bow, Nebraska. And the second is, why don't you have food trucks? If any of you, if anyone in the town watching, has traveled to a brewery, which is different than a brew pub. A brew pub has a restaurant, and they brew their own beer, and they typically sell it only there. It's a different license. We fall into the category more, although we're nothing like them in terms of scale, of a Budweiser, it's a brewery. So our business is to introduce people to the various styles we serve and we create there, and then hopefully, they'll go to the restaurants and hotels and what have you to have it. But it is, it's an industry norm. The citizens of Tuckahoe that come in, I probably get this question 25 times a week, which is, why don't you have those gourmet food trucks? They just come up, we can buy a hot dog, or we can buy, you know, whatever you're serving, and it makes it easy for us. Now, from the beginning, we have countered that by hanging in our vestibule and posting on our website that you are encouraged, you're allowed, to bring in any takeout from any restaurant in town. That will continue. You can bring Tupperware from home if you want. That will continue. But this issue of the food truck, it is, it's something that is akin to the industry. I think it makes for more of a magnet, visitors to town. It's something that people are used to, and it's interesting, and as I said, even a lot of your own, our own citizens ask routinely, how about the food truck? From me, from my perspective, while we encourage people to buy food from a local restaurant or bring it from home, having the food truck on premise does at least ensure that there will be food on premise, and we are, you know, we do serve alcohol. So to me, I think it will help with safety. I think it adds to a neat magnetism to the building, or to the business and to the town. And it's something that my customers, your constituents, and people that visit ask for. That's the reason for the food truck.
Good. Sounds good.
Bill, I got a question about food trucks. So does this, what's the definition of a food truck? For instance, could a local business put in a grill, for instance, and do a barbecue or something, obviously at their permission, or a cookout type event? Or is that not a food truck? You know, kind of like a tailgate on a single day? You know, how is it regulated? How do you think about it? So if Angelina's wanted to boil some pasta or whatever and serve some pasta one night, you know, could he allow them to come in and do that?
Yeah, I think so. It's like the way his site plans set up now, he can do that, have people bring food in.
Or cook on premise or cook in the parking lot?
It's all about cooking on premise.
Right. Because that's, a food truck is cooking on premise, you know? Obviously, it's a truck.
Within the truck.
But what if they have a grill outside the truck? You know, so, which some of them do. So...
Good question.
Not trying to be esoteric here, but...
Who run the trucks contained?
I mean, I think it'd be kind of cool if one day, you know, Coryn did it, did, you know, instead of it was Walter's food truck, you know, Coryn could have a night that they did something special for you guys or whatever. And so I'm just wondering, you know, what we're saying yes to, what the possibility is.
Well, I think your question's a terrific question. I hadn't viewed it that way. I, in my mind, I'm thinking along the lines of what you see on the food channel. I've not seen a grill outside a food truck. Typically, it's all in the food truck. So I'm, in my mind, I'm thinking about a food truck that is self-contained. Certainly, they can use our trash bin afterwards, but they roll in, they're approved by, you know, the health department. Gourmet and style, not, you know, something interesting. And then they roll off, so not parked on the street. For the record, we do have an area adjacent to where our silo is and where the, there's a fenced enclosure that is not a parking place, that a food truck would fit very nicely, and it's next to the table, so...
Can we show the plans? The red square is where the food truck is going to be, correct?
Right. So here's the beer garden. There's the silo area. This area right here, there is no parking place, and that's where I would think a food truck would fit most naturally because the tables are there. People can go and get some food and sit down.
Is there an egress or ingress right there?
Yes.
Is there a door?
Yes.
Oh, your architect's...
Well, we've got the big door that is open between here. So there's the big cargo door. That's where people come in and out. And then we also have another door to the side. Yes.
I just want to make sure that's not blocking off if people need to exit the building.
Oh, there's, you know, there's plenty of space for that, yeah.
And I'm sorry, I'm going to repeat David's point here. I'm just trying to say, when you say food, I'm just asking the same question over again. When you say food truck, is it specified within the village code? Food truck has four wheels? It's a box with a window?
No, it doesn't.
Is there any sort of detail regarding what a food truck is?
If you don't want it cooking outside of a food truck, I think you could make that a condition of the food trucks he...
And I'm not saying this gentleman's, he's always talking about gourmet food trucks, but could someone roll up in their Chevy four-by-four and have a grill sitting in the bed? And there you go, food truck.
I would think that they have to have the necessary licensing and, you know...
Okay. And I was just wondering if it was detailed in the code.
Yeah, we would insist on the necessary licensing because it would be a bad reflection on our own business. And so we, again, as I say, we're looking for the kinds of trucks that are interesting, that would be fun for people to try whatever cuisine they're bringing with them to the neighborhood. We're not looking for something that you see parked along the side of the road. That's not, that's not our agenda.
Yeah, my question's really, the point of my question was actually to give you a little more flexibility. You know, to the extent that local restaurants are, have, could provide you a service for one random night to do something interesting, you know, but that's not their regular business, I think it would be kind of cool synergy to be able to do that.
Well, in the past, under special permit for whatever event it was, Chamber of Commerce had events, things, other events have occurred, not tented events, but just events in the parking lot. Dom and the quarry were there. And we've had American Bistro was there when they were with us. We've had Tucked Away. We've had, we've had pretty much all of the restaurants in town. Eastchester Fish, Lent is a staple around there. But always under a special permit. So my understanding was, we're just here to understand what are the rules of the road so that we don't have to continue to take village time to ask for this. If you are open to that, in my mind, when I said food truck, I was really thinking of, you know, the scenario I described. But for local restaurants' benefits that do not have food trucks, but are certainly licensed food establishments, you know, wonderful, if that's okay with all of you.
I would think that would be included. I don't think necessarily that it has to come in a truck, but he's going to bring in an outside vendor that's going to supply food for the evening or the event or whatever it may be.
I like that definition.
It could be Angelina's that is bringing, you know, pizza one night. It could be, you say Walter's bringing hot dogs one night. Doesn't, just gives them, allows them to have the food service outside the building to serve.
Great.
And how many days of the week were you looking to have the food truck, please?
Well, we're only open to the public on Thursday through Sunday. So Thursday through Sunday is what we would be looking for.
Good.
Now, what about music?
With the truck itself?
The truck?
With the truck.
Or, you know, your events or whatever. Okay, we're thinking about your neighbors, okay?
Right. So we do not have a sound system outside. We did not contemplate music with the food truck or the, you know, a grill from the local restaurant. We do get a cabaret license when we've had music on the inside of the building, and I would expect that that would continue if we're, if, on item number three, the tent, if there are special occasions, the folks that would bring, would want to bring a tent, I'm sure would like to have music of some sort.
So on this item, Gary, if we're writing up a resolution, let's just make sure we talk about, you know, flexible language around, you know, outside vendors as Bill described it.
Good points.
Could you, what do you call, state your hours of operation? So in other words, people that are watching would understand, in other words, if, you know, Thursday is one to five or what, you know?
Absolutely.
So that's where they know where they stand with that?
Yes. Yes. Um, we're an early morning business, much like a bakery. We start very early. Um, so we have early closing compared to a bar or restaurant, something like that. On Thursday, we are open five till eight.
And that's when you would be looking to have?
Yes, we're not looking to extend our hours.
In other words, it wouldn't be before, it wouldn't be after five to eight, it would be within the, uh.
Right.
It would be within the hours of five to eight o'clock.
Right. Before, we have our vehicles moving in and out with, you know, kegs and things like that.
Yeah, that's understood.
Yeah, no, no, no reason to use the parking lot for anything other than just regular business. Um, on Friday and Saturday, we're open from one till ten. Uh, and Sunday, we're open from one till five. Uh, we have received, uh, a lot of pressure over the years, couldn't you make it one till six? Um, but I can tell you, I have no appetite for one till ten, because Monday morning comes very early.
All right, item number three.
Um, okay, so, um, really, that's, item number three is the genesis of what brings us here today. In that, uh, four years ago, uh, we, we opened in August of two thousand thirteen. And at that time, um, Bill really wanted us to have, uh, more of a detailed plan in terms of schedule and, and what we might want to do with the parking lot and what have you. And candidly, as I said back then, um, he was right. But new to the business, I did not know what we needed. I didn't know, did not know if the public was going to show up. I, I didn't know. Um, since then, uh, the public has, particularly the, um, a lot of civic groups in the area have really embraced, um, the, the brewery. It's, we need the space, if you've been to it, on the inside of the building, there's a, we have a large area that does not have tanks and equipment, but we use that area. Today, we were using it for canning. So our equipment is all over. By the end of the business, the canning equipment was all away, and it, the room was all tidied up. When it's tidied up, it's very, it's a nice space that's open for, if I want a birthday party, or I wanna, I wanna civic event, or something like that. So over the four years, um, groups have arrived. Most of the groups are, you know, fifteen, twenty people, not large in size. But we have received a number of inquiries, and then finally, one bride and groom this summer decided that they wanted to tent a part of the parking lot. Um, and so, uh, the, the photos, uh, here, for anybody that's, uh, watching, um, this is the back of the warehouse. All of that blacktop is the parking lot. The tent, uh, and in a covered walkway, because they were afraid of, uh, rain on that day, um, probably covered about a third of the parking lot. Um, they paid, uh, another organization, a rental company, uh, to erect the tent, uh, to take it down the very next day. But they had their wedding reception there. Uh, I believe it started around, uh, three or four in the afternoon. It was a catered event. Uh, there was live music, I'm sorry, it was a DJ, uh, until about, uh, ten o'clock. Uh, and then it was cut off. Uh, at the end, they also had an ice cream truck. Um, and, and that was that. So the, the challenge that we have is that as folks are beginning to, you know, imagine what they would like to do, um, with the parking lot or the space, when we're not brewing, um, every time we do something, it requires a special permit, uh, because we're not zoned correctly. I think that's, uh, the parking lot is not zoned for this sort of use. So there has to be special. So the suggestion was, come down here this evening. Let's see if we can sort out, you know, the, um, A, if it's possible, B, what the rules, what, what rules would be palatable to allow the parking lot, activities in the parking lot. Um, as I mentioned, we have had one event in four years. We have not, I think it happened in June or July. We have not received another request since then. Um, the only other couple that ever got serious with it, uh, one I know was the Community Fund, and, um, I think the second was the Chamber of Commerce, but the cost of the tents are, they're very expensive. It's prohibitive. I think it was five thousand dollars for the day. So most, um, charitable groups don't want to take that on. And so I don't envision that this is something that would happen frequently. But if we could have some, um, uh, direction, uh, if approved, as to, um, how, uh, business can be deducted and be conducted in that way, I think it would make this process simpler for everybody going forward.
Well, my, my question would be, if it's once in four years, then why not just come for the special permit each time?
Well, um, that was the plan. That's always been the plan. That's what we were doing, because we don't, we're not, we don't advertise, come do your wedding reception here. Um, but the suggestion was, um, you guys are here too often for special permits. Uh, we did a, uh, something for, uh, the, the charitable chili cook-off. We've done pause and play. We've, we've done a number of events not involving tents that, because the zone is not, or the parking lot is not zoned for events.
Well, then maybe I'm not clear. Bill or Gary, I need clarification then. If the locals, the, the places he just mentioned, want to come again today, he needs to step forward for a special permit each and every time?
Yeah, he, he would appear at the Village Board almost monthly, uh, seeking permission to do these different activities.
So if we give him permission to have the food truck, does that eliminate his need to come in front of the board each time?
Like the chili cook-off event?
Like a chili cook.
Why, why was that, why was a special permit required for that?
Cause the site plan doesn't allow him to act as a catering hall.
So if he were allowed to have this food truck?
Food truck only covers serving food to the patrons inside and in the beer garden.
So he still would need to come if the chili cook-off, he still needs a special permit, even if he had the approval for the food truck?
Yes, because you're only allowing to have someone supply his, uh, business on those specific days for the patrons that are there. We're not talking about special events.
So we're talking about two. If we approved everything, tent and all, he would still need to come back for special permits?
You approve everything, then all he needs to do is deal with the Village Board as far as a cabaret license for the outside alcohol.
So are we?
Not the alcohol, the outside music.
All right, I'm, I'm sorry. I, I'm still not clear. So hypothetically, he gets the approval for the, for the tent, he gets the approval for the food truck. He wants to have a chili cook-off, but he doesn't want a tent. He needs to still come in front?
No, he would not.
Why not?
Cause you're gonna give him an approval to do so.
So we're not given approval for a tent? We're given approval? So we're given an approval to use the parking lot for special events?
Yes.
So, how is, that doesn't sound like a special permit use. I mean, how is it actually phrased?
It's amending his special permit that you approved under his original site plan.
To allow special events in your parking lot?
Yeah, because he's taking away from the parking that's required.
Now, if, if I could just follow up on that. At the planning board meeting, you mentioned having an arrangement with, uh, your next-door neighbor regarding parking. Has that been formalized at this point?
Well, it's formal, yes, it's in writing. Uh, I, Dave, did you submit a letter?
It is included, okay. I'm sorry, so it's included in our, so we already have a formal arrangement for his parking?
No formal arrangement, but I spoke to the neighbor. He doesn't have an objection to him setting up something to use the parking lot. But I think you would need to see a copy of a lease, saying this is how many spots I'm gonna provide for special events in my parking lot.
So, so, uh, so, so we've actually changed what we're talking about here. What you said was, once in four years, I needed a tent. But now what we're discovering is, at, once a month, you're getting the special use permit in front of the Village Board. So you're having these.
Did we just have Oktoberfest?
So you're having these.
No?
Well, we should. Twelve straight days, come on. Get the, get the picnic tables out, come on. Um, so, so it sounds like you're having these events in the parking lot very regularly. I mean, once a month, what, you know, six times a year? Wait, what's your guess? Okay.
Six times a year. No, and, and, and again, most of them that have occurred, um, are connected to some, um, local civic organization who has said, why can't we do this? So, um, they're, they're, other than the wedding. The wedding was a real outlier, both in tent and that it was a private party.
So let's, Bill, so let's say we go down this path, and we say, okay, it's great, but we don't want you doing it every day. We want him doing, uh, ten, ten a year. I mean, does he call you and, and check off, this is my first one, this is my second one, this is my third one? I mean, is there any precedent for, uh, something like that, where people are reporting that in, or is that just a bureaucratic administrative nightmare?
I just think, I mean, what you're, what you're asking, and what he's doing is, if he's, if he's gonna be allowed to do events, I don't think there should be a number. Maybe one's gonna be a Thursday night, one's gonna be a Sunday afternoon. I mean, you don't know what it's gonna be. He doesn't know what it's gonna be. He started at his brew, and now we're having events. We're having people that are there, seems to be during the evening. Now we're talking about a food truck because they are there. I think it's just to allow him to do those things when he, when he needs to do them.
And I, I remember originally, when we, um, approved his special permit, there was very specific hours he, you could operate. You, you can't go later than ten or eleven o'clock, whatever it is. Um, so those would just carry through, I assume?
Yes, it would.
Or if you wanna be more restrictive on the outside, you can also do that, if you're inclined to do that.
So six o'clock, everyone's gotta head inside, or something of that nature?
No.
Oh, yeah, I'm just, okay. So we, we could have two separate issues. We have the events, and we have the tent. They're actually separate issues, not, they're not one and the same.
They're the same, whether, if you allow the events, then all you have to do is, let's say, four events throughout the year require a tent in the parking lot. Okay, so I'm gonna be able to put the tent in for those four events, because I'm allowed to do it. As long as I provide parking somewhere else where the tent's gonna take up my parking spaces.
So my, my concern, Bill, is I don't want a, a tent to, a tent to become permanent. I'm just gonna leave it up for the next time I have a, an event.
What you're gonna do in your approval is say that it's gonna be limited to the time of the event, whether it be from five in the afternoon to ten o'clock at night, or one to seven on a Saturday. It's not gonna be able to stay up more than, uh, the period of the event.
I, I think Mr. Jackman was getting at something, though. I think if you say, okay, I think you have to separate it in a way, that you can have, um, if you're gonna have an event, you put time limits on them. Um, however, you're only allowed six tented events a year. That's something.
That was kinda my thought, is that, similar to Member Scousa, I didn't want a tent up there every week he's having it. I, I'm not saying that would happen. I understand the cause is prohibitive for a tent, but I don't wanna get, go down the road where also we have a tent fifty-two weeks a year, three days, three nights, uh, three nights a week. So I feel like those two issues can be separated, where do the events you want in your parking lot, as long as you have coverage for your parking, but, you know, you get four tented events a year, or something. I'm just, I'm just making up a number there.
And if I.
I think that's going down the right path.
Yeah, and if I may offer again, um, Monday through, the, the reason, um, that we recently, um, changed, Wednesday was also an evening that we allowed people to come in, and we stopped doing that. Um, and it's specifically because of the, um, you know, the shipments that we have that come in and go out. And they go right through that same bay doors. So the notion that we could have a tent, a freestand, Form 10, or anything else out there i- in a permanent structure is just, it's really a non-starter, because we couldn't operate our business.
Well, I thi, and I think one of the other things we're dealing with here is, I, I, one of the concerns, I'm gonna guess, for the neighbors is gonna be the noise if there's events. Um, I think one easy way to separate that would be to link any outside music, any sort of, uh, uh, bands you might have to these kind of special tented events. If you have these other special events that don't require a tent every week, and we're gonna have a band every week, that's gonna be an issue. It almost, almost might be easier to separate the issues, and say, you get, uh, four, six, eight, whatever, tented events with live music. Your other special events are not allowed to have outdoor music, cause I, I just can't imagine being one of those neighbors every weekend, you know, three nights, having, having music blaring down there. You know, and we'll have to set our limits, I'm assuming, if we approve that. But just a thought.
No, I, I, again, I, I think it's a good thought. Uh, and whatever the neighborhood needs, uh, or, or desires in terms of, you know, four events, or six events, what, w- again, our, our primary purpose is to, is to manufacture beer. And so while it may sound like there's a lot of events going on there, and over the course of four years, there have been a lot of events that have been there. Most, when, most of the things that happen are, you know, fifteen, twenty people. They're on the inside of the building. They're here to watch a Rangers game, or a, or they celebrate a birthday party, or something like that. Um, there's been one ten in, in four years. We have no advertising whatsoever for that, no plans to do it. So if you told me, these are the number of, this is the cap on the year, number of times a year, and we certainly are not set up for, you know, bands and things like that. We're set up, if there's a ten, you know, they run the power cords and do what they need to do in a mobile, but that's, that's.
No, and I mean, you're a conscientious business owner. You guys are successful. It's fantastic. You're wonderful citizens and, you know, contributors to the community. I think one of my concerns is, in general, when we approve these zoning variances, this variance will be with this property forever. So you're fantastic. Who knows who's, you know, let's say in ten years, you know, there's a new tenant, they've still got those rights. And they may not, they might not be as responsible owners, responsible citizen as your business. So it's something we have to kind of, we're gonna have to put limits of some sort in place to kind of be, you know, keep the concerns of the neighbors and community in mind. But I have to say, you know, we appreciate your business, and the fact that you guys are here and thriving is a fantastic thing.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I just wanna bring up one point. Don't forget, there's gonna be a hotel there soon, too. So there might be a couple more, maybe special events from there? Is it, yeah? Nah, nah, no.
But I would like to point out that, you know, there is a, I get the feeling, and I'm, you know, this, I'm speaking for myself here, not the village, there is a feeling that Marble Dale, you know, there's a different vision for Marble Dale now, that, you know, we want kind of a thriving, hipper.
A little more life would be good.
A little more life, a little more, you know, of this feel, having a beer garden, people outside, enjoying the evening. You know, I think that's the kind of businesses we wanna see, and the kind of activities we wanna encourage. And, you know, uh, an aging sort of industrial, uh, street like that, so, general thought.
Uh, I have a question. My, my thing is with regard to music. Personally, I like music, okay? But I'm trying to think of the neighbors and their quality of life, okay? You, you mentioned before, if there's going to be music, you need a special cabaret license, or something like that there, or?
Yeah.
You do. So they would have to go in front of the Village Board to get a cabaret license?
That's, that's here, Bill, right? The cabaret license? They don't have to keep coming back for each event, that's just a, uh.
And would that be linked to our special events, you know, the whatever, four, six events a year?
They have to go to the board.
That, that.
So they could do their own thing if they wanted?
Totally separate issue, that would have to go, anybody wants to put music, uh, out, excuse me, any event that wanted music with that, you know, with their event, they would have to go in front of the board, the Village Board, to get a special, uh, permission, in other words.
So we're not even dealing with music?
So we're not even concerned about it. Every, anything that he has will be without music.
Correct, until the Village Board's allowed, Village Board allowed that part.
Right.
Correct. So if you limit the events, he's not gonna have music out there without an event going on, obviously. So you, by you limiting the events, it's gonna limit the music he has out there indirectly.
But potentially, say we allow you to have unlimited outdoor events, as long as there's no music, and you get four, six tented events a year, potentially, the Village Board could say, uh, you're allowed to have outdoor music at all your events. I'm just devil's advocate. You could, the Village Board could make up its own mind regarding what events to limit it to.
He, he's limited by hours of operation, at the, you know?
I'm just being theoretical.
The Village Board's gonna be, um, take this board's recommendations, and hopefully implement those.
Thank you.
You know, let, let's put it this way. We're talking about a, an extensive situation where you're gonna have to write up all these things, what they're gonna be allowed to do, okay? In other words, so that, in other words, that the, all, all, all things are covered, okay, as much as possible.
Right, I explained to the planning board, you have to kind of create a box that he can work within. And I think he's looking for that, too. He wants to know direction of what he can and can't do. So you're creating this box of what he can and can't do. So that is, you know, I would obviously need input from this board to tell me what that box is.
Do you have the questions?
I think there's a lot to talk about amongst ourselves.
So what's the best way to kind of do that? Rather than having the poor gentleman stand up here while we figure out, you know, one to five on Thursday, one to?
Generally, yeah, this is kinda stuff.
Is this a work session?
Work session issue, um, but to save time, um, if you wanna email me recommendations, whatever, speak to Lyle, to just to make sure we're going down the right path, but ultimately, the work session is where.
Okay, so try to get some ideas from the board members, flesh something out for the next work session, and really sit down and hash this out uh, prior to the meeting, so we can come present it at the meeting, or he can present it. Okay. Thank you.
One other question. When you're having a special event, is the food truck there, or can the food truck be there also?
Uh, I, I mean, I suppose it's possible, but typically, uh, when people have come in. Oh, I mean, I suppose it's possible, but typically, when people have come in and it's a private party kind of thing...
They take over the whole situation?
No, often, yes, they can. But often what they do is they order from one of the local restaurants and the food comes in for their party. So, I don't think, now, if, if they knew we had a food truck, maybe that would take care of it. But in the past, I mean, if you went out to our dumpster on Monday, you'd think we were Pulpatina or Quarry or one of the other restaurants in town. And you could see where all the food's coming from, all the boxes and what have you. So, I, I think in terms of what they would order, it would be up to the party still. But we, you know, the food truck might be an option if there's one there.
Yeah, I'm trying to, how should I say? I'm trying to think of the, your neighbors, okay? Personally, I think this is all great. I think it's, it's a nice thing to be able to go down there, have a beer, have a little something to eat, you know, with the food truck and everything else like that there. But the situation, how should I say? I live at the extreme north end of the village, okay? When the thing, when the events go on at Parkway Oval, especially like with the fireworks and all that there, I'm sitting outside with my friends and stuff, you know, I could hear it all going on, okay? And I'm trying, with that, I'm thinking of your neighbors, what they would have to bear with, okay? You know, personally, I have no problem, but, you know, it is a quality of life issue.
I happen to be one of your neighbors and so far, I think it's, no, you've been fantastic. It's wonderful. I mean, the wedding was, was one, you know, a one-off and an exception. But every other event, it's, you're a great asset, has already been, has, has already been pointed out. Great asset to the village.
I appreciate it.
We'd love to, love to go forward with this. But we do need to hash out, you know, all the specifics.
Sure.
I'm happy to see that you're doing so well because I remember when you guys first came in front of us, there was one of the big things, no food.
Right.
That was the thing. Now, it's sort of grown, okay?
Yeah, well, I think the growth, thank you. I think the growth has come a little faster than we anticipated because there was no food. Because we concentrated on one thing, the beer. And now that we've won a few national awards, we do have people that come in routinely, particularly on the weekends from other states, because they, just like any other hobby, they're looking for certain things. So, we've been visited by folks from every state in the country. We've got a map up, there's like twenty, twenty-five countries around the globe. So there's, you know, I believe them, they stick their own pin in, so hopefully they're telling the truth. But we, we have concentrated on what we know and kept to the side that that we don't. I don't know the restaurant industry. That's the reason the food truck makes sense to me.
No, no. I think with the situation with the hotel, somebody brought that up, okay? It's going to be in the hotel, you know, with the little booklets the hotel has and everything. Hey, we got a brewery right down the street. And, you know, you're going to be getting more business there, too.
It has already been asked, have we had any complaints regarding people outside or noise or anything of that nature regarding this business? A single one? Nothing? Okay.
No.
All right. Thank you.
I'm happy.
Should we public here?
Yep. Any other points you need to make before we proceed?
Thank you for your time and look forward to your comments.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Okay, we need to make a motion to open the public hearing regarding the 173 Marble Dale Road. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone from the public here tonight that wishes to comment regarding the 173 Marble Dale Road? Seeing none, I'm going to make the motion to leave the public hearing, public hearing open until the next meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Is there any other business that needs to be discussed?
Mr. Charitable?
198, I'm sorry. 198 Marble Dale Avenue has adjourned for the evening, will not be in front of us. They will be coming to the next meeting. Seeing no further business, I'm going to make a motion to close this meeting. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Good night, Tuckahoe.